The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Well, again, thank you for joining us on this city council meeting for Monday, October 20, 2025. You'll see notice that I'm not Mayor Knack. I am Mary Solberg. I'm president of the council and I will run the meeting in his place tonight. He will not be here, but I will retain my right to vote. So having said that, we will have the clerk take roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Luther? Crow?
Here.
Sutherland?
Yeah.
Yanko?
Here.
Pickard?
Here.
Schwabs?
Here.
Gents?
Here.
Solberg?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Summerfeld?
Here.
The mayor is not here tonight as he is taking part in Jackie Dotz's celebration of life. Jackie, on behalf of the City of Menominee and as council president, I'm saddened to inform you of the recent passing of Jacqueline Jackie Dotzeth. Jackie passed away on October 12th of 2025 at the age of 89. Jackie served on the city council from April of 78 to April of 85, including two terms as council vice president and one term as council president. I would like to take just a moment and have a brief moment of silence in memory of Jackie. Thank you very much. Jackie was quite the mover and shaker in our community for a lot and lot of years. And if you've lived here for any time at all, you you knew Jack and Jackie and John and Tim. And so they they are worthy of all the accolades that we can give them. So I would look to have approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Ryland?
Yes, I would make a motion to approve last meeting's minutes.
I'll second.
Sidney, second. Okay. Any corrections? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Carries. Public comments. This is a more odd time in the agenda where you can speak for three minutes on anything that is on the agenda. We try to hold this whole section to 15 minutes, but we will see how it goes. But in the meantime, if you want to speak, step up to the podium and sign your name and an address, right?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. Name and address.
All right. Good evening. My name is Darren Watucki. I'm at N 4395, somewhere at 30th Menominee. I am here on behalf of the Menominee Public Library Board of Trustees, here to speak on Agenda 5B, on your agenda, in support of a grant application for roof mounted solar project at the library. We became aware of a Wisconsin local project grant. That grant requires one half the project funds to be accumulated, plus construction-ready documents. We were intrigued by that and we were actually kind of saddened because we thought we would have no project ready, but we actually have done some previous work on a solar feasibility study and we were able to get construction-ready documents by the application date. We also have accumulated the one half of the funds through the Menominee Public Library Foundation. And we are looking for key support, such as support from this body, the city council. The project helps support our shared goals of environmental sustainability and stewardship. It leverages the library in its role as an educational beacon within this, and it frees up about $13,000 from our Excel bill to put into our annual operating budget and over the life of the roof, which was just replaced, as this body knows. At least $430,000 of electricity bill savings over the life of the project. I will remain in the gallery as you take up the item for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Jacks. My address is N 5322200 Street, Menominee. I am representing Conagra Foods Swiss Smiths at 104 River Road West. On 5A, the awarding of the dissolved air flotation construction contract, I wish to state that Conagra is in agreeance in concurrence with Cedar Corp and the City of Menominee for that awarding of that that project, as we are the primary funder of that project. So I just wanted to come in person and say we are in agreement with moving forward with that and look forward to working with the city and Cedar Corp on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Going once? Going twice? Public comments are closed. We will move on to five, new business. A, award of Conagra dissolved air flotation construction contract, discussion and possible action. See, Dave, is, are you going to take the lead on that?
Yes, ma'am. So you folks may recall back in December of last year, we brought an agreement before you to partner with Conagra. They had been discharging a fair amount of fats, oils and greases or fog to our wastewater system and it had been causing some problems. We've been working through the final design and the bidding of that and that's what's before you tonight. So we received, well, let me, first of all, set the stage here. So this, there's two existing equalization tanks just north of the community services building down near the river. Next to that, these are those two tanks. Next to that, there'll be constructed a building that would house this dissolved air flotation. And the fats, oils and greases kind of want to come out of suspension, but we don't really give them a chance usually in wastewater. And so the DAF creates the situations where that easily comes out and floats to the surface and then it kind of gets skimmed off and taken in another direction. So inside of this building, which is just east of the two equalization tanks, will be housed the DAF and then some chemical tanks on the backside of the building and then what's called a float tank on the inside of the building. It's not the kind of thing that you want to float on, but it's the materials that come off the top of that DAF. The reason why this location was chosen in, as opposed to somewhere on the Conagra campus, is because these equalization tanks allow us to design the the DAF for a very constant flow because those tanks can flow up and down. And then what's coming out of that can be just, you know, exactly, and I don't recall what the gallon per minute, 500 gallons per minute or whatever the the flow is, but it's a very consistent flow coming out of that, of those equalization tanks versus if it was on their their property, it would have to be a much larger unit to accommodate their larger flows. So in that agreement, the city pays $0 towards the construction or the operation of this. Conagra is paying 100% of the design costs, 100% of the construction costs, and 100% of the operational costs through a reimbursement style situation. The bids came back and I will let Kevin kind of explain the bids that we received.
All right. Thank you, Dave. So we went ahead and opened bids up on October 8th and we're happily surprised that we got five bidders as part of this project. There is a bid tabulation that was provided and you can see, Dave's going to bring it up. So RJ Girarski Construction out of Whitehall, Wisconsin, came in at the low bid of $3,388,832. And then it went all the way up to just under 4.4 million. When we looked at it, just prior to bidding, our engineer's estimate was $3,957,100. So when you look at in between all the, you know, individual bids that were given, kind of in the middle of the pack. But with that, if you remember, RJ Girarski was the contractor that did Phase 2 as part of the wastewater treatment facility. So we're confident that he's a reputable contractor and we're recommending award to him based on that amount.
So the recommended motion, if this body agrees, is award the Conagra DAF construction contract to RJ Girarski Construction at a cost of $3,388,320 contingent upon recording of the land transfer. So we are still working with the attorneys for Conagra to actually transfer that land from them to the city. They had, right now, that is a driveway that goes into the backside of their plant. And so we need that land to be transferred. And we are working back and forth. Ben Ludeman and their attorneys have worked back and forth. I suspect that we'll have it by the end of this week, or at least I hope we'll have it by the end of this week. But we're hoping that you can make the award contingent upon that. But just that way, we don't have to wait until November 3rd.
Now, are there any questions for Dave? Go ahead, Ryland.
I guess, what's the expected lifespan of this facility? And what do we do with these fatty solids that are skimmed off? I guess, what's the long-term effect? I guess what I'm getting at?
So the the lifetime of the facility, I would, I would suspect will be probably 40 to 50 years. There will be definitely be parts of it that will need, there's a lift station in there, and so those pumps need to be replaced probably every 10 years. And there's some other skids for some of the chemical feed. So there's some things that would would wear a little quicker than that, but overall, the system should be that 40 to 50 years. The float will be transported by truck over to the treatment plant and put in the digester. So it avoids all of the clarifiers and aerators and all that stuff, but it still goes out into our land-applied bio solids.
Yeah, I have a quick question about how much capacity the construction will hold. Like, I guess where my concern is, is if we get another, someone else in our industrial park that produces the same amount of waste, will we be able with this facility to clean that out of our wastewater and Conagra's? Or is this pretty specific, I guess?
This serves Conagra only.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody else's waste goes there.
Matt?
Oh, yes. I remember back in December, we were having problems with our phosphorus emissions coming out of the water wastewater treatment facility with our rolling average there. So does this help with that? Or is that a separate project?
So, yes and no. So the, what, and again, this is my my theory right now, but I think what's happening is our sand is being coated by fats, oils and greases, and then the phosphorus isn't being collected properly, or the phosphorus is grabbing onto the sand and then it's being coated by fats, oils and greases and being discharged. So my hope is that once this is in place, fats, oils and greases will be dropped dramatically, that we can up the chemical feed rate in our sand filters and meet our goals with phosphorus.
And do we have a timeline for construction?
End of next year. End of 2026.
With the changing landscape, never mind. I answer my own question.
Go ahead, Sidney.
Do you have a question? No. I'll make the motion to award the Conagra DAF construction contract to RJ Girarski Construction at the cost of $3,388, or, ah, $3,388,320 contingent upon recording of the land transfer.
Is there a second? Lee?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further questions?
I have a question. Hi.
Abby?
So it says that they will cover 100% of the cost of design and construction to operate the DAF. What does that payback situation look like?
So I believe they're required to pay us within 60 days of providing them with an invoice. So each, as each, this is probably the type of project that would have 12 or 15 applications for payments. And then so we'll essentially have probably one payment that's that we're holding while they're waiting for, we're waiting for them to pay back the last one. So there'll be some kind of interim financing that we'll have to look at. Paul has some cash and the utility that we could probably float some of that. But it was, it wasn't like we were going to bill them over 20 years. It was they were going to pay it back within a very short amount of time.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Ryland?
Has Cedar Corp designed similar facilities before? Or what kind of hiccups do you foresee?
So actually, Mead and Hunt is the one that actually designed the whole facility. We're just being brought in to go through the RPR services. So through all, just through the construction phase only. But Mead and Hunt is actually the engineer record for it.
And they've done similar facilities?
Yes, yep.
And you've worked with them before and?
Yeah, they're, they're a pretty big company and they specialize in a lot of this work. So sure, Mike is very confident with what they put together so far for bidding documents and things.
I'd make a motion to waive the rules if we could have him come up and speak.
Who wants to speak? Mike? Mike? Okay. And a second from?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion from Ryland and a second from Sidney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Carries. Welcome back, Mike.
All right. Sorry about that. Mead and Hunt specializes in in wastewater and wastewater treatment. They are Conagra's preferred engineering service. They've done it for us. Say, we have like 108 Conagra facilities. They've probably done, I've been at Conagra 15 years, maybe seven, eight major, I call them major wastewater type facilities in and around the United States with municipalities and without municipalities. So I would be very confident. I mean, otherwise, we wouldn't be funding it, you know, with the design. And I think in partnership with Cedar Corp and the city, we all kind of walked through the the design parameters of this, this facility. And there is, within our facility and the waste and the stream, a large portion of extra capacity too, if something were to change within the design. So very confident in the, in the design.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay. Thank you, Mike. Any other questions in general? This is a roll call vote. Pickard?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Okay. Item B. Consider engineering task order for Heller Road and Oak Avenue sidewalk. Discussion and possible action. David?
Yeah, so Heller Road and Oak Avenue are either adjacent or within TID 14. TID 14 is reaching the end of its expenditure period. It's September of next year. We would have to have any construction contracts awarded. We don't have to be completed with construction, but the contract has to be awarded. We have a couple of projects that we'd like to do with those funds while they're available. The first is to reconstruct Heller Road from Highway 12 to the golf course driveway. That section of road is a rural section. There's quite a few apartments, Tantara Apartments on the south, and then there's a number of four to six-plex apartments on the north side. There's, there's no sidewalk in that area. So those folks, if they wanted to walk to the grocery store, they'd have to walk on the roadway. And that, because it is TID eligible, that's something that we could use TID funds for. The second is on Oak Avenue from Highway 12 to Highway 25. That roadway was not constructed with sidewalks when it was extended back in 2017 or 2018. I'm sure folks probably walk across some of the private property there to get to where they want to go. But I feel like a sidewalk on one or both sides of Oak Avenue would be a worthwhile investment of these TID funds that are available. Cedar Corporation has prepared a task order to do the, just the topographical survey and a boundary survey to verify the existing location of rights of way and to at least get the information that they will need to do a design probably over the winter. And we feel like this would be worthwhile of expending 2025 funds for. This was not in our budget, and so that's why we're coming here to ask for approval to expend these funds to do the preliminary topo for this. So the requested motion, a few folks concur with this, is to approve the engineering task order with Cedar Corporation for Heller Road and Oak Avenue sidewalk at a cost of $9,750 from TID 14.
Matt?
When does TID 14 expire?
Can you turn on your microphone, David?
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Should I repeat my?
If you could, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I believe it's September 7th of 2026 is the end of the expenditure period. Other probably four or five years of life in the TID. I think this TID is in pretty healthy condition. So we probably will be able, even after adding this project, we'll be able to close it early or extend it with the affordable housing extension.
Speaking of affordable housing, would you expect that even with this project, we'll get some funds from this TID to put towards that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, don't you have to spend X amount of that TID after expires towards affordable housing?
If we do an extension, 75% of that year's taxes has to be spent on affordable housing. The other 25 can be spent on any sort of housing. But that's only if you do the affordable housing extension.
I'll make the motion to approve the engineering task order with Cedar Corporation for Heller Road and Oak Avenue sidewalk at the cost of $9,750 from TID 14.
I'll second.
Cody?
Okay.
This is a roll call vote. Ryland?
I just had a quick question. It looks like from just the rough sketches here that you'd be looking at sidewalks on both sides of both streets, which I, I mean, as much as I am a fan of adding more sidewalks, that does seem like for a low foot traffic area a little excessive. Just want to make sure that we're spending our money responsibly and not just going, well, we have, have some money burning our hole in our pocket. Might as well spend it.
Yes, as my memo says, we'd be looking at adding sidewalk on one or both sides of the roadway. There's no decisions that'll be made tonight about this. We'll take a look at it, verify. There may be areas where we don't have enough right of way to put it on one side or the other of the roadway. I think there's a good chance that like at where Arby's is, I think the tight, the right of way gets pretty tight right there. So it may not be possible to put it on the south side of Oak Avenue. But we won't know that until we get this topo done.
Some motion and a second. Any other questions? This is a roll call vote.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Consider agreement between the City of Menominee and Dunn County for Dunn County to act as the city's agent for the billing and collection of general property taxes, special assessments, and special charges beginning November 1 of 2025 through October 20, or October 31 of 2026. Discussion and possible action.
All right. So I'll help fill in the group. So in years past, Dunn County has provided this service to us by collecting our taxes, special assessments, and it's been a great partnership at, for what I certainly think is a very reasonable cost for slightly over $10,000. They will provide that service for us. For us to tackle that, that would require additional staff, which is quite considerably more than that amount. So staff is recommending approval of this agreement with Dunn County and proceed as we have done in the past.
Matt?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the tax collection agreement with Dunn County for the period of November 1, 2025 to October 31, 2026.
Okay. Gretchen?
I'll second that motion.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Moving on, item 5D. Presented before us for consideration is proposed Resolution 25 dash, 2025 dash 16 regarding support for a proposed roof-mounted solar project at Menominee Public Library. Director Sturk, please provide any background that you have that you might, for the purpose of the resolution?
Good evening. Thank you for considering this resolution that's before you. What I would point out is that we are not anticipating using funds from the Helen Halberg Estate, but rather funds from the Menominee Public Library Foundation for the match. This would in no way impact city tax base or allocations to the library. We're simply looking for a vote of support from all of you. And we're trying to be good stewards of the environment, recover a little cost so that we can put it into our operational funds and do the most good that we can for our community.
Any questions for Director Sturk? Go ahead.
I just want to say the projects you guys have completed at the library recently have gone way above my, I just appreciate it so much. You guys are doing some really good work over there. And so I very much support what you guys are trying to do here.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we're really fortunate to have Mr. Watucki on the board and having his expertise at UW Stout to tap with facilities management. So that helps us an awful lot.
Gretchen?
Is, I know that solar's changing rapidly with regards to the market and whatnot. Is this project possible for the end of the year when there might be changes? No. What is the timeline for the end of, or when will, when will the purchase of the panels occur?
So this is a state-funded project. If we're lucky enough to be awarded the grant, and that is the only condition in which this is a scenario that's possible at all. The money wouldn't be awarded until the next fiscal year. So solar wouldn't, the panels wouldn't be purchased until next summer at the earliest.
Is, and follow up on that is, is, is there any contingency for potential dramatic price changes in the grant?
Well, we've had it, we've had this proposal prepared by Olson Solar and I'm confident that if they were anticipating massive changes in their cost, that that would have been shared on the front end.
Okay.
Gretchen, just to answer another question, this will be bid out. So Olson Solar doesn't have the project. There would be a public bid for this.
Sidney?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution 2025 16 regarding support for proposed roof-mounted solar project at Menominee Public Library.
Ryland?
Yes, I would like to make a second on the motion.
Any other questions for Director Sturk or for Dave or any of us? This is a simple majority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Special event request for Winterlude Market, City Land adjacent to Brewery Nonic on December Special event request for Winterlude Market, City Land adjacent to Brewery Nonneck on December sixth of twenty twenty-five.
So we have before you a special event request from Brew Nonneck for the Winterlude Market. That's their outdoor holiday market that they've been doing for the last couple of years. Part of the reason why this request is, is here before you tonight is because part of that market actually occurs on city property. So they were requesting a special event approval to be able to extend part of that market onto our property. They've been doing this now for several years and they haven't had any adverse events at the market, so to speak. So it's been a successful event. We just want to make sure they, they're covered and then we're covered as well since they'll be on our property.
Sydney?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the special event request for Winterlude Market on city owned land west of Brewery Nonneck on December sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Ryland?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to, or second that motion.
Questions? Any other comments? This would be a simple majority, I think.
Simple majority.
Okay. All those in favor of supporting Winterlude? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carries, thank you. Moving right along. Now the fun. Okay, do you want to take the budget right from the get go?
I sure can. So included in your packet was the draft twenty twenty-six general fund budget. It is strictly a draft for you to be able to take a look at and review. I'm still missing numbers from shared revenues from the state. I don't anticipate getting all of those until about mid-November. So we're still missing what some of our revenues will look like. And part of that too includes understanding what our, our final aggregate ratio is for our assessed value with our equalized values. And we'll talk more as we get into budget hearings in November. Right now at the onset, so what I presented before you includes the additional three firefighter paramedic positions that were directed by council at a previous meeting. So they are included in on the fire department budget, so if you go to their page, you will see that as part of their, their actual payroll costs. So overall, right now, we're looking at a budget shortfall of about a half a million dollars. That half a million dollars includes the payroll, operational expenses, inflationary expenses related to contracts that we have in place, both for union and for general services like software as services and, and other contractual obligations that we have in place. So looking at our draft budget, one of the things as to why we give it to you in October is to have an opportunity to look at it before we do a deep dive into each individual account in November. And then the goal is in that second meeting in November to have it passed. We would have a public hearing during that time. Now, there may also be an opportunity, if this body needs it, to have special meetings for the budget. So if we're not getting to where we need to be and you feel that you need to have an additional meeting to have discussions, we can do that. Some of the challenge that there are in front of us, of course, are levy limits. Now, we did have a net new construction of two point one percent this year, which is slightly higher than what we've had in years past, and that's based on our actual levy that, that we issued to the taxpayers, which is approximately eight million dollars. Doesn't give us a ton of wiggle room, so we're hoping some of those shared revenues will be a little bit higher than what they have been in past. So I'm holding out hope for that. We'll also be taking a look at some opportunities for us to be able to adjust investments to hopefully have additional shared, or have additional revenue that we can utilize to offset our expenses. So there's going to be quite a few things for us to have a discussion on next month. If you want to meet one-on-one to ask questions about some of the budget, you're welcome to do that by all means. Reach out to me and we will schedule some of that. So as we move into the actual full body meetings in November, we can have a, a good discussion as to where you want to go with the funds and the general funds. And then towards the end of that month, we will also bring our utility budgets and tax increment district budgets to as well.
Gretchen?
I just wanted to ask with the fire department funding, because I was looking at that, did you just add it, or did you start shuffling and pulling from other areas possibly?
What you see before you, well, a couple of questions in there. So I did add the funds in there, so you will see extra expenses related to the payroll. There's also expenses that'll get tied into insurance, FICA, and those sorts of things, and so those are dispersed. Additionally, in the document, you will also find that there are some reductions in areas, so I tried to reduce in spots where I knew we weren't going to have expenses or we were trending down in areas, so I thought maybe we could do without in certain spots or at least less, and then try to mitigate some other expenses. We also, some of the things you may see in other different accounts, we'll talk more about it in November, is that we combined some of the accounts, like line items within the accounts to one, both help trim some of that cost, but then also give flexibility, so that way department heads can be able to move money around a little bit more so, even if it's not necessarily as much. But it will fit still within a chart of accounts, so if it's items that maybe we had line items in commodities, let's say five different kinds of line items, we may have shrunk that down to two. And to try to combine them in our trim costs. And so through the next few, next couple of meetings that we will have and through looking at what comes through from the state, will allow me to be able to make adjustments in there to hopefully reduce those costs. And then additionally, if you have suggestions, when we have the budget meetings on, and they will be on the next two agendas for sure, then you'll have a chance to be able to, to provide some input or direction, depending on which way you want to go with certain things.
Matt?
Yeah, does this five hundred thousand dollar deficit include a possible salary for another building inspector if that gross shield ordinance were to pass? And does it also include the projected revenue limits and the two point one percent added levy limit with the net new construction?
Okay, so you got a couple of questions in there. It does not include the inspector cost. So if we add the inspector, then we're at about six hundred and ten thousand dollars at our current levy limit, we're going to have an issue. So we would not be within that range. There's a couple of things that we can try to do to mitigate some of that. Again, the revenues that come in, that I haven't in the numbers, that'll help a little bit. There's some other things I might be able to do when it comes to debt service. There's other opportunities too where we might be able to cut in some other particular areas as, after I talk with department heads.
And then I just noticed, now we're going to get into this more in the next meetings, but under the mayor section, it says a temporary employee services for fifty-eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars, and I know there's little notes about that, so we're expecting a temporary employee in the finance department during that time to, or going from finance to admin?
Yes, so we were looking to move the temporary employee position from finance over to the admin, and then that admin person would then be the chief operator for the city as well as the informational person upfront, so it's just transitioning from one department to another.
Okay, and that's why, that's part of the hundred thousand, almost hundred thousand dollar increase under the mayor section there?
Oh, indeed. The other part of it is too, is we transitioned the payroll specialist out of finance, because there was a payroll human resource specialist out of there or in that department, and we, that person's position was changed and they are no longer with us. So we hired a payroll specialist at a reduced cost that is now housed and supervised under the admin wing. And then the human resource duties were taken on by myself and my assistant Pam Wildner. So that allowed us to be able to save an expense of hiring two additional people versus just one.
Sydney?
Yeah, I'm going to kind of piggyback off of what Matt said. Is it possible to request a budget copy with that additional building inspector for those who are not on the housing committee? Last Tuesday, we passed unanimously to recommend that we add a build, another building inspector to the city just because of the ordinance that we are currently having legal counsel and city staff work on. Dave mentioned that it'd be really hard to have those proactive rental inspections and take care of the issues that we're experiencing in this community without it, just because of the constraints, and we want to make sure we're not putting that department underwater, so. Is it possible to see a budget with additional inspector?
I serve at your pleasure, so if you want me to add that.
Please, thank you. Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just got one more question, yeah, well, two more questions, and the first one being under police, they have the, you know, building office slash rented a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. If we were to move ahead on a referendum for a new police station, would we still be paying a monthly mortgage, or is that the taxpayers paying that, or how would that work?
So if, if you did move with a referendum and it passed, so whatever the cost of the building would be that, in theory, let's say it's approved by the taxpayers. Once that's constructed, we would be able to move out, move the police department out of there and then terminate our lease agreement, so that hundred and seventy-five thousand would go. One of the things to consider is if you did a twenty-year note to borrow, let's, whether you do referendum or not, there's some options that you can do with it. If you priced out the facility at its full price that was recommended, now that's with everything that you could want, we did ask for the group that was doing the study, provide the best possible scenario of what, what could be used and what would that cost be? Cost is roughly thirty, thirty-two million dollars. To do that with payment is going to be roughly two million dollars additional a year in debt service. So it's more expensive, certainly, but you take that lease out of there. But there's also things you can, like I said, you can do with debt service that you can't do with lease rates.
One more is the workman's comp, it's a hundred ninety-four thousand, about the same from last year. Do we really spend a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars in workman's comp, or are we just budgeting in case there's a major surgery that happens in there, and what, what do our numbers usually look like?
That's for insurance. We have to pay a portion of workers' comp insurance, and so that's based on a formula calculated on how many employees we have, wages, and then injuries, so every year Eric crosses his fingers and hopes that we don't lose fingers and toes and those sorts of things. And then if, if we do well, then we get basically rebates that can come back from our insurance company, depending on which, whatever vendor we're working with at the time, and then sometimes that reduces those expenses. But that's largely based on the number of employees, the number of accidents, and we've been good the last couple of years, thankfully, so that's helped keep that expense down. That's a good question, though.
Sydney?
Sorry, another quick question. Does this budget include possibility for rezoning work? I know Dave and I possibly talked about, because I was interested in ADU zoning, and that would cost money to just redo all of our zoning map. Is that included in this budget or no?
It is not included in this budget. If you're looking at doing, let's say you wanted to touch up an ordinance or a zoning ordinance, then we could utilize that through either the legal items under city council. There's a council account, and then there's also a legal account which talks about council and then general liability, or excuse me, general legal. And you could use some of those funds if we wanted to. If you want to look at doing a comprehensive like rezone, like redoing our, our zoning ordinances, I would recommend tying that in with our comprehensive plan, because we're going to be due to update that. In order to do a comprehensive plan and a rezoning, because they go really hand in hand, you're going to be looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars. So if we had, added that, two hundred thousand dollars, and then the inspector, now we're at like eight hundred thousand, so we're way beyond anything we can absorb. And, you know, part of the, and I know I'm, I'm going to beat this drum, the levy limits that are imposed by the state are, are really difficult for us to handle, and I, and I recognize that challenge. Certainly from being a department head and then also as an administrator, because it, it inhibits your ability to want to do and produce and create the kind of services that they feel a community deserves, so it's just, it's one of the very challenging things about this time of year. The state did help us out a little bit with some of the changes in shared revenues that are largely based on sales tax now. But still doesn't solve all of our problems.
And then I was recently speaking with some state representatives and they mentioned a non-state grant program that's still, cities are, and municipal governments are able to still apply. Are we applying any programs for that grant that we are aware of?
I'm not sure which grant you're referring to, but we apply for a variety.
It's literally called the non-state grant, like it's a very interesting name, because it's any, it's to be used for anything that is not at the state level.
Or like appropriation.
I can answer that one. The solar resolution that you just passed, that's for that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Perfect, okay. Um, we can apply for more than one program, they said. Could we possibly look into doing a few to see which get approved?
It depends on what the criteria is. So if you're talking, some grants are specific like projects for solar, like the library, other things might be restricted on not having personnel or operational, and I'm not sure what all the requirements are for that particular.
Yeah, maybe we can meet individually and go through it to hopefully help with this budget.
All right.
Let's see, where are we?
Uh, we, if we're done, if we're done talking about that, and I'm sorry to be a Debbie Downer when it comes to the budget, there's some big challenges there. Other than we're on budget transfers.
Okay.
Madam President.
If there's no other questions about the budget, then we will move on to budget transfer. We have one.
We do. So presented before you today is one budget transfer request. It's an, it's an interdepartmental transfer, so finance is looking to transfer five hundred dollars from one account to another, so we can purchase a coin machine. We're in the process of revamping our financial policies and procedures within the city. Part of this is to enhance our internal controls. It's something that our, our credit bureaus look at for us when we're looking at borrowing. This, this is allowing our finance department to take on most cash operating duties within the city, so there's a couple of departments that produce a fair amount of coins from services that they provide. This would allow us to take in those coins and be able to process them quickly. So it's not coming from contingency, it's coming from accounts that are currently allocated funds and shifting to another one that's a little short.
Sydney?
I'll make the motion to approve the budget transfer as presented.
Sir, second. Abby?
I second the motion.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, concerns? Hearing.
This is a roll.
Roll call, yep. This is a roll call vote, so go ahead.
And you're first.
Oh, yes.
All right. Brennan?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Passes. Moving along. Mayor's report, well, he left part of a one. This past week, Mayor Knack spoke at the Boys and Girls Club, spent time visiting several nursing homes in the area, and his quartet, quartet entertained customers at the seventieth, seventieth anniversary celebration of Fleet Farm.
That is it?
Yep. And also stout homecoming is this coming weekend? Just so you know. Anything else?
Uh, no, you can transition the communications and miscellaneous business if you like.
Okay, moving on to communication and miscellaneous business. Item, or eight. I don't have any more.
I don't. I think I took the fun out of the room about the budget, so unless counsel. I did, I'm sorry.
Kate?
Um, no, I have nothing for the group tonight. Thank you.
Lee?
Abby?
Um, so at our last meeting, I mentioned that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the Walk for Pause event was a success, it went really, really well. But then this Thursday, there's a dine to donate opportunity at Applebee's for the Bridge to Hope. Ten percent of funds go to them as a donation. So take your partner and your friend, and your friends and your family to Applebee's this Thursday night for dinner. Thank you.
Nighttime it is?
Yep, it's a dinnertime.
Okay.
So I think it starts at like four thirty or five.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a good cause. We're lucky to have them in our community. They do really important work. Also, I recently learned that Wisconsin ranks seventh in the country for domestic violence mortalities, so. It's a really good cause.
Gretchen? And, okay, Eric?
High school football playoffs start Friday. Menominee's playing in Alaska at seven PM. Support high school. Support high school and the team.
Matt?
Downtown Menominee is doing their, uh, Fall Frolic on Saturday at 9:00 AM, in conjunction with UW Stout's homecoming, so the homecoming parade will be downtown as well. So, we got, you know, both events going on, and the football game after that as well. Uh, then last week, uh, we had the Empty Bowls, um, that Stepping Stones put on, and it was at, uh, Tanglewood, so thank you to Stepping Stones and Tanglewood for putting on a great event there.
Okay. Dave? Anyone else at the smart table? No, not even you, Kevin? Okay. Randy?
The boat ramp down at Point Comfort Point is almost done. Just got to put the tower on, I think, it looks pretty level. I haven't ventured down there to see the water's edge, but they've been working a lot and blocking the road, and must have run in electrical power lines, new ones down there, so it's one lane.
Ryland? Sydney?
Yeah, I'm really excited to bring forward to the council today an update of the housing committee. I kind of briefly mentioned it when we were talking about budgets, but I just kind of wanted to go through with what we have done. So, we made a recommendation and directed city staff to work with legal counsel to draft a proactive rental inspection ordinance based off of the framework Grow did with a few provisions that we had at the committee. So, what the framework so far would do, um, would be to allow for neighborhood stabilization and enhancement district, or N-Seds, and their data-driven zones that identify areas needing proactive maintenance and inspections. This will allow us, within state statutes, to proactively, like I said, inspect, um, some rental units. We also have retaliation protections that give tenants a clear path to report unsafe or uninhabitable conditions without fear of reprisal. Unfortunately, that's really, um, prominent in our county, um, where we're seeing people getting kicked out of their homes for either requesting inspections or complaining about something wrong, so I'm really excited to bring that to the local level. Um, and then also a rent abatement model. Madison does one of these, and I think they're really successful there, and they've been tested, and they stand up to the state statute. Um, it allows for fair rent reductions when serious code violations are verified. Um, the building inspector will verify that whatever, um, is susceptible for a rent abatement, the tenant can apply, and then we approve it if it gets approved. It's just a really big step towards making our housing conditions better in Menominee. Our city staff is bringing it back to us November 11th, and I'm hoping to have a recommendation on the full ordinance to this council in December. So, if you're interested or have any questions about it, please feel free to reach out to me. Our next housing committee is tomorrow, where we're talking about a shield program, which will give us opportunity to recognize landlords that are doing a good job, um, as well as a tenant and landlord education and awareness programs. So, I'm excited, come out, if, it'd be great. That's all I got.
Cody? Nothing. Okay. Um, moving right along then to, um, claims. Uh, which one's the revised? We'll say revised. Oh, okay. Anyone care to make? We'll let Ry, Ryland go first.
Uh, I'd make a mo, motion to play, pay the revised claims list as presented.
I'll second.
Sydney? Okay. Any questions? Concerns? This is a roll call vote.
Brennan?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Silberg?
Yes. Okay. And we got the normal license list. Uh, let's see. We have a change of agent. And you want to do these both at the same time?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, and the temporary Class B wine list for the Public Library Foundation. And we'll do these both at the same time, so. Abby?
I make a motion to approve the claims list as presented.
Okay. Cody?
Um, I'll second for the license list, right?
I said claims, I didn't meant, I meant licenses, I was looking at the wrong one. Do I need to redo that? Okay. Yes.
Yep.
And that's the license list.
It's a Monday.
All day. Okay, um, we have a motion and a second to, um, for the license list. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carries? Okay, we are now going to enter into closed session, so I will ask Kate to need a motion and a second to go into closed. I'll make a motion to go into closed session. Ryland?
I would second the motion.
Is, uh, can I get a quick clarification? So, Madam President, is the, the motion to convene in closed session under Wisconsin statutes 19.81?
Oh, yes.
Pairing 1E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public lands, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to discuss or consider possible offers to purchase for 228 Main Street East, 230 Main Street East, 244 Main Street East. Was that the motion?
Yes, it was the motion.
All right, very good, and then.
I failed.
Ryland, was that your second?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, I didn't do it right.
That's quite right.
Okay, and this is a roll call vote.
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Silberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
All right, everybody, we'll ask you to step over.
For coming tonight. We have some more business to attend to, so.